All right, good evening and welcome to the February 2nd meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with requests to speak cards. They're right over there. A reminder to everyone that requests to speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk prior to completion of any staff presentation. For those speakers wishing to speak on items not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write the item number on your card, and that's listed on the agenda. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised, so all speakers, in order to be recognized, must be called on by the chair and come forward to the microphone. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to be uncomfortable, so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful at all times. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I will ask Commissioner Vu to lead this and pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're now moving on to the general administration functions. The first item is a swearing-in of planning commissioners.
Good evening, everyone. If you could please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
Please state your name.
For it in Austin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Well, congratulations, commissioners, particularly our new commissioners. The next item on the agenda, item B, is the election of Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary. I think we'll start with Chair. I'll look to my commissioners to make nominations.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Austin for Chair this year.
My second.
Second?
Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor of myself as Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Any noes, or abstentions, motion carries. The next item will be Vice Chair. I will look to my commissioners for nominations for Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, oops, sorry, Madam Vice Chair, I would like to nominate Commissioner Sternfeld.
I'll second. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those no, abstentions, motion carries. The last item on the elections is for Secretary. I will accept nominations.
It'd be my honor to nominate Mr. Tilly as Secretary of the Planning Commission.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, I will take a vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those no, abstentions, and the motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Tilly.
Thank you very much. Look forward to working with you all this year.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Sternfels. So, we will move on to item, I think we'll move on to item C, selection of the Planning Commission representative and alternate for the Age Friendly Communities Advisory Committee. Do we need to discuss a little bit about what that involves?
Yes, our former Commissioner Kelther was our representative to that, or a group that this Planning Commission voted on earlier last year. And so, John Robinson is the Deputy City Manager, and I spoke about this earlier today. This is a committee that's formed of representatives from all of the city's commissions, and each commission is being asked to select someone to be part of that. They meet monthly, like the third Tuesday, I believe it is. That effort is scheduled to go through this summer, and then that committee's role should conclude. So, we are seeking tonight the commission to select someone to be part of that, and then an alternate as well.
So, I will solicit nominations, but also solicit self-nominations. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, too, Mr. Tilly, if you can maybe explain, what's the purpose of that commission, or committee, and then what, just for someone who are new?
Sure. Yeah, the city has been working with ARP for about, probably at least, the last two years on achieving what's known as an age-friendly designation for our community. We've been selected by ARP to be part of this effort, along with some other comparable cities, like I think San Diego and San Francisco and LA, to achieve this designation. And they do a whole audit of our community in terms of our age-friendliness, which really was well-suited for us, because many of the things we've been doing all along are very suitable for folks of a range of ages. And so, this is an advisory committee, helping the council vet some of the matters, and ultimately will produce some recommendations that the city council will consider likely this summer. And we got a little taste of this through the general plan effort, and it's possible that some of those outcomes may need to be incorporated into the general plan, you know, later this year. So, this has been going on for a while. It's a fairly prestigious designation for a city, especially of our size, to have. And so, it is important, and we look forward to having a Planning Commission representation on that committee.
I have a question. David, given that we're a couple commissioners short, is there a sense of urgency, or is it worth maybe tabling this particular nomination?
They, City Manager's Office did ask that we do this this evening. They do have another meeting coming up later this month, and so, if we don't do it tonight, we wouldn't likely have another meeting before their committee meeting is. So, it's up to the commission, but we would request that you do this this evening.
Just to follow up, so if we decide to nominate someone today to be representative of that committee, and there's an interest later on for two commissioners that are going to come on board, it's always, we can always bring it back to the commission and see if there's any interest and switch that out, or how does that work?
That would be within the, certainly within the Planning Commission's, you know, prerogative. I know that effort is moving toward the home stretch.
Okay.
So, hopefully, we can find someone amongst the group here, but if we need to wait, that's your prerogative.
Thank you.
Is there anyone interested?
I was previously serving as alternate, and I'd be comfortable serving as primary or alternate. I'm fine either way.
And I would do the alternate if you do the primary.
So, is there anyone else who is interested in serving in either primary or alternate role in the age-friendly communities?
I should note that I believe their meetings are like a noon to 1, a lunchtime-type thing.
They're daytime weekly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, in that case, I would be happy to nominate myself as the primary representative for the Planning Commission on the Age Friendly Communities Advisory Committee. I think maybe we'll do that one first, and then we'll do the alternate. So, someone want a second, and then we can vote.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Abstentions, motion carries. And for the alternate, I will also like to nominate Commissioner Lapore.
Be happy to second.
So, I'm sorry, any other nominations now? Okay, great. So, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? No, the motion carries. So, we have a representative and an alternate. All right, so the next item is item D, presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the commission. The commission is prohibited by law from discussing issues not on the agenda brought to them at this time. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on an item not on the agenda? Okay, moving on to item E, correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Commission Secretary. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, thank you very much. On behalf of my staff and I, I'd like to congratulate our returning commissioners and welcome our new commissioners. And we still have, we have two commissioners yet to be filled, and we do expect that to occur at the next council meeting, so they will be here for our next meeting. One very important thing coming up for all commissioners is the Board and Commission Orientation, which is February 8th. Strongly encourage everyone to go there and respond to the city clerk's office. I know they're providing food at that meeting since it overlaps the dinner hour. This is an important and great opportunity to also get your required ethics training done by Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Ibrahimimi. Trust me, that is vastly better than watching any of the webinar or any of those kind of stuff. And it's frankly just more in-depth and more real than that webinar is. So, please make every effort to attend that. Again, they'll be here in the council chambers on the 8th, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That concludes staff communication.
Are there any other documents you want to go over with us, or no? Correspondence that might have been left? There appears to be memo, but is this just?
I don't know what you, I apologize, I don't know what you have in front of you.
Well, I'll tell you what I have. I've got the memo on conflict of interest spheres, and then it looks like two documents that may require signatures.
Okay, I apologize, I don't, I recognize, yeah, we did produce the 500-foot radius maps for each one of you based on your residence and things. If those are incorrect, or if you own additional properties in town, please let us know so we can update those for you. And then Katie, what is the other document they have?
We have a copy of the oath that you guys recited today, as well as the Code of Ethics. If you could please sign that and return that to me tonight, that'd be great.
Excellent. All right, so we'll move on from item E. Item F is disclosure of ex parte communications. Planning commissioners should disclose any communications they've had on the agenda items at this time. So, if you want to take a minute to review the agenda item, there's the minutes, as well as a public hearing, I'm sorry, and a project outlook. Does anybody have any ex parte communications they would like to disclose? Looking to my left, and then to my right, seeing none. We're moving on from the general administration function, moving on to the consent agenda for approval of the minutes. And if you choose to vote on the minutes, you need to have been present or have viewed the meeting. Is this, just to confirm this, is this correct? Ms. Ibrahimimi? Okay, thank you. So, I'll accept motions.
Sure. Madam Chair, I would like to move for the approval of the November 1st, 2016 Commission Meeting Minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I'm actually going to go ahead and do a roll call vote for ayes, noes, and abstentions. I believe, yes, thank you.
I'll go ahead and do that. Commissioner Vu?
Epstein.
Commissioner Leibig?
Aye.
Commissioner Sternfels?
Aye.
Commissioner Castillo?
Aye.
Commissioner Lapore?
Aye.
And Commissioner Austin?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to the regular agenda, item two, Mr. Tilly. Or, I'm sorry, is this?
Yes, Associate Planner Kathy Allen will present this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Austin and members of the commission. This item is a conditional use permit application for retail auto sales in the M1 Zone. The applicant currently operates this business in another location in the near vicinity of what's being proposed at 1309 Trade Wind Circles. Her business has expanded, and so she needs a larger location, and that is why she is proposing the location on Terminal Street. This is not a traditionally used car lot. Her business deals with storing classic and exotic cars, and occasionally someone wants to co-sell one of those cars. It's done inside the building due to the value of the vehicles, so it's not like they're going to be for sale out there in the parking lot or anything. This basically concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Staff is recommending conducting the public hearing and adopting the recommendations as presented in the staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. I will actually start on my left to see if there are any questions or comments from, sure, yes.
Sure, I'll start. Just starting with a congratulations on a successful business. I was part of the original approval, and I do remember reviewing this and going over at that time, so I don't have a whole lot of comments, because I know a little bit about the business already. And thank you, Ms. Allen, for the report. You actually answered all of my questions already, given that there are no known issues with the current business. The property is not exactly ideal for a car sale business, but this is not a typical car sale business, so given that, I, sorry, I'm happy to move forward with this project, but I won't make that motion just yet, because there's a whole other.
Don't jump the gun.
No questions.
Okay, and I'll move on to Ms. Lapore.
No questions, I'm just reading through here. Obviously, it looks like a great business, and I'd love to buy a car from you at some point. No, I think everything was pretty clear, straightforward, and covered, so.
Just encouraged by the fact that the business is growing. Thanks to the staff for providing a very well-detailed background information and briefing docs, which were helpful for me as a new commissioner, so thanks for being here, too.
Well, I would just like to echo what my fellow commissioners have said. Thank you for continuing to business, and congratulations on continued success. I'll entertain any motions.
Could we open the public hearing, please?
Thank you, yes. Opening the public hearing. And if anyone would like to speak, including the applicant, they're welcome to come up. And you're not required to, that's fine, too. I will close the public hearing. Are we good? Just making sure we got everything, all of race is covered? Excellent. And with that, I will.
With that, I will move to recommended action.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition or abstentions? No, the motion carries. Congratulations, thank you.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission this matter to the city council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk. Within 15 days of tonight's action, that appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee.
Thank you very much. And we'll move on to item number three, 2017 Planning Commission and Project Outlook. And this one is by Mr. Tilly.
Yes, thank you, Chair Austin. Since this is our first meeting of the year, and we have some new commissioners, I wanted to give you a brief outlook of what I expect to be coming before the Planning Commission this year, especially as you may start to be hearing about some of these projects and some of the persons associated with them, you know, maybe trying to contact you regarding them. I wanted, you know, just to give a quick overview of what's coming this year, and for our 2017 Planning Commission year. So, Katie, next slide. So, for, I'm focusing on, you know, really the most big-ticket items. These are about the six, what I'll call, major projects, or projects of substance that I expect to be coming before the Planning Commission, you know, this year. You know, some maybe in the next few months, some more in the back half of the year, but these are all projects that, you know, we'll need to sort of sink our teeth into at the Planning Commission. I'd be happy to, you know, give any more detail about any one of them if the Planning Commission wishes to do so, but I at least wanted to sort of introduce you to some of the ones, so if you hear about them, maybe they ring a bell when people see you in the grocery store or anywhere else around town. The top two projects are both large master plan projects in Southport. River Park may seem familiar to some of you. That was an approved project way back in 2008, and they'll be coming back for some changes to that project with a new landowner. Liberty is a specific plan we've been working on also in Southport for several, you know, several years now, but I think we're starting to, you know, move toward the finish line on it. Stone Lock, this is the property just west of Jefferson, near where the Barge Canal access is. That's a project that's in the works. Savoy is an infill project in Washington by the Bardas Homes Group that we're looking at now. Grand Gateway, this is a city initiative. This is the property that the city owns at the east end of West Capitol here, where we're going to be folding some additional property into that and putting a formal PD overlay on it. And so, that will be coming before the Planning Commission. And then also a new locate, potential new location for Lighthouse Charter School in the bright neighborhood will be one that we'll need to bring forward to you.
Mr. Tilly, actually, before you move on, would you mind describing a little bit about what those acronyms are, for example, PD, CUP?
I'm sorry, PD is Plan Development. We'll be asking the Planning Commission to recommend putting a Plan Development overlay on that property to help implement that master plan. And then the Savoy, that's a subdivision map and a conditional use permit. That will be coming before you, about a 20-unit infill project that we're looking at in the Washington neighborhood currently. There will also be, you know, like last year, we spent a lot of time on policy matters of general plan. There'll be a lot of policy initiatives this year coming for the Planning Commission as well, some of which are limitation measures of the general plan, and some of which are really, you know, coming off of that. I think probably the first one out of the chute would actually be the Climate Action Plan. We're trying to button up the last pieces of that. That's sort of a subset of the general plan. We'll need to bring that forward to Planning Commission before council final action. One of the items we introduced back in December was, through the general plan, we consolidated the commercial zones into one, and we started to introduce that. And at that time, the commission to give us some direction to work with the chamber and some of the businesses that may be affected by that. So, that's underway, but we want to bring that back to you as soon as we can, because we're in a bit of limbo right now on some of those commercial properties here in town. Cannabis is a huge issue with the passage of Proposition 64 last year. We will definitely need to be making some adjustments in our municipal code related to cannabis, you know, one way or the other. So, those will ultimately be zoning matters, and so those will have to come before the Planning Commission. I don't know what those are going to be yet, but we will need to work on that this year. And one of the other, you know, major initiatives that we're going is, we're going to be overhauling our whole zoning ordinance, you know, top to bottom. You know, some of these things, like the cannabis, you know, won't really be able to wait for that. But we'll be definitely needing to work a lot with the Planning Commission on a complete modernization of our zoning ordinance, almost, you know, throwing out the one we have and starting not quite from scratch, but close to it. So, they'll be, we'll need to have, get a lot of input from the Planning Commission on that. And as we proceed, there will be various other general plan, you know, implementation measures that we'll be working on, many of which, you know, will need Planning Commission consideration, you know, through this year. So, those are some of the big-ticket items, you know, in substantive matters, in addition to some of our more bread-and-butter projects that I expect to come before the Planning Commission. Kind of wanted to preview a lot of this for you, sort of get you thinking about some of these things, and then we'll talk about, you know, the best way to bring them to you, to, you know, get the best, you know, feedback for you, and, you know, from me and my staff. And I only have one more slide. It's really talking about, just referencing a lot of projects that are really underway at the moment. If anyone's curious about some of these that are either under construction or soon to be under construction, there are numerous ones going on around town, and I think if it weren't raining as much, there'd be a lot more construction activity happening, but all of these are, almost all of these are projects that have come before the Planning Commission in the last couple of years, and, you know, they're all substantive, you know, in their own way. So, there's still quite a bit happening in town, and I think once we get past the winter, you'll see a lot of activity, you know, throughout town, you know, north to south. So, that's what I want to do for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions about anything coming up or any of these that are in the pipeline. But otherwise, I want to say I'm looking forward to another big year with the Planning Commission. It's going to be hard to top last year, but I say we try. So, with that, I'll close my remarks for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. I'll make a couple of points, and then I'll turn it over to my fellow commissioners. There, the, we've used a lot of, we've referenced a lot of projects, and we've used a lot of industry jargon, and I would encourage especially my new commissioners to reach out to Planning Commission staff after this meeting or before your subsequent meetings if you have any questions on, that are, you know, substantive, or just related to what exactly a Planning Commissioner does, or what some of these terms are. For the purposes of people who might be viewing this at home, Mr. Tilly, can you let folks know, if they're curious about these projects, is there a website that they can go to, or an email that they can contact?
Yeah, they're, we have almost all of these projects on our city website into the Community Development, you know, section of the website. There's a lot of graphics and some of the project images on there, both projects that are pending and projects that have been recently been approved. And we're happy to provide any of that information to anyone who would like it, including the commission.
Great, thank you. And with that, I will turn it over to my Planning Commissioners to see if they have specific questions at this time, and I'll start with Commissioner Lapore.
You actually just answered my question, because I was going to ask for a little synopsis on each project, but I'll go to the website.
And there's probably pictures and maps of many of them.
Yes, we're even figuring out a way now where you can text to a certain code, and it'll shoot you a link back as part of our innovations, you know, efforts. So, I don't know how many, it's how well it is to look at some of these on a phone screen, but at least if you can get the link, then that gets you going there on your way.
Thank you. If no further questions, you can go, Commissioner.
I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Mr. Tilly, we don't have to do this tonight, but it would be helpful either tonight or at a future meeting if we could go back and do a quick recap of some of the projects that we approved last year and their status.
Okay.
I know we had several hotels on the cannabis front. We had a big project there. It would just be nice to get an update on kind of where things are at, I think, as we enter this year.
We certainly can do that. Would you like us to actually agendize that, or could we provide you, us just a summary memo of them? We can do whatever the commission prefers.
I would be fine with a memo, but I defer to the larger, larger group.
More than happy to do it either way.
I think a summary would be great, and then if anything changed from the initial development.
Okay.
And I'll, I think I'll piggyback a reminder on what Vice Chair Sternfels just said. I think it would be helpful to have a memo, but I think that we can, that we commissioners can review in advance of an upcoming commission meeting, but I think it would also be helpful for some key topics, perhaps, you know, I think cannabis is a, it's a really big issue. And then anything that has come out of the city council retreat as far as policy and management, hot topics, those might be, as they relate to the Planning Commission, for example, things that we might see before they go to the city council might be helpful.
No, I agree. I would like to, once, I would like to get the hold of that information myself.
Yes.
The retreat is fresh, but I'm certain that at least something coming out of there will ultimately fall within the Planning Commission's domain.
That sounds good, and then I'll actually, Commissioner Field. That sounds good, and then I'll actually, Commissioner Vu?
Yeah, a quick question. A quick question. You mentioned the commercial zoning consolidation. I believe this was mentioned at one of the previous Transportation Commission meetings, but was this the area that's specific to around the Bridge District, or is it another area?
There, there are several pockets of commercial zoning that we had in town that were, like, C1, C2, or C3. They were, and so through the general plan, we consolidated those into one commercial zoning district because there was so much overlap amongst them already. So, what we need to sort out with the Planning Commission and ultimately the council is the mechanics of those in terms of the allowed uses in this new combined zoning district. So, there is some commercial right outside the Bridge District, kind of like the Drayver-Suley Street area, but there are other areas of town, too.
Alright, excellent. Does anybody have an additional questions or comments for Item Three? And nothing from the audience. So, seeing none, thank you for your presentation and answering our questions. We'll move into informal discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I am pleased to announce that in mid-January, the City of West Sacramento, in partnership with Fulcom Properties, was selected to receive the American Planning Association Sacramento Valley Local Vision Award for the Barn Project. The barn was recognized specifically for having an outstanding contribution to creating better communities throughout the Sacramento Valley section. So, having served on the Commission at the time that the project was approved, I was honored to be present to help present this award at the American Planning Association Sacramento Valley Awards Ceremony, where Phil Wright, the Assistant City Manager, was present to accept the award on behalf of the city.
Thank you for that. Any other informal discussion or announcements? Does anybody want to ask for future agenda items, or anything on the calendar that's upcoming that might be pertinent? Okay, well then, what, before we adjourn, I'd like to do one quick thing. I'd like to do some introductions. And I think I'll go first. I'll have Vice Chair go second, and then we'll move from my left to my right. If you could tell us a little bit about yourself, I'd love to hear about your profession or your expertise. If you would be comfortable, share what neighborhood you live in, and anything else you would like to share with us. So, my name is Bernadette Austin. I live in the north area of the Southport neighborhood. I work at UC Davis at an Applied Research Center, and I've worked quite a bit with land use, active transportation, affordable housing. And I have two kids, so, and they're adorable, and I love talking about all of those kid and play and youth and health-related things. Vice Chair Sternfels.
Thank you, Chair. Andrew Sternfels, proud to be and grateful to be a part of this team again this, for the next two years. I live behind the high school in Southport neighborhood. I have two children as well, including a very young one at 13 weeks. My day job, I'm the Legislative Director for the State Department of General Services. Background is mostly in economic development, hospitality, and now government affairs. And then I also have a side project called Assemble Sacramento that we're working on building some community-based infrastructure in the, in, in West Sacramento and the greater Sacramento region.
Thank you, and I think, if you'd like to go next?
Okay, I'm Russ Lebick. My partner and I live in Broderick on the north side of town. I'm a fish biologist, and I work in Davis for a company called Stillwater Sciences. Let's see, for, in addition to the Planning Commission, more recently, I've, I've taken over Andrew's position on the Sacramento Valley American Planning Association Board as the Planning Commissioner Liaison. So, that's why you'll probably be hearing from me about little things like awards and leadership, planning sessions, things like that coming up. I'll hopefully keep everybody up to speed on things like that.
Great, and hello, everyone. My name's Tom Vu, and first time here on the Planning Commission, so thank you very much for having me. I'm very excited to be on this Commission. I previously served on the Transportation Mobility Commission, and before that, the Housing Advisory Commission. So, I've been around for a little bit, but very happy to be more involved in, in alternate life. I am a lobbyist for an organization that represents private nonprofit colleges and universities, so schools like Stanford, USC, and we represent their policy interests in the capital. My wife and I live in the Southport District, just behind Our Lady of Grace. No children, but we do raise a hamster. And, let's see, oh, before I was lobbying for AICCU, I was a lobbyist for the California Chamber of Commerce on transportation issues and also land use and walkability issues, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Can't beat the pet, but Francisco Castillo, currently work for Union Pacific Railroad, Public Affairs Director, focused on managing the state legislative strategy for the company in California and also local governments. So, about 120 communities, which are Vickersfield, north to the California-Oregon State Line. West Sacramento is one of those cities that I am in constant communication with. So, also was a previous member of the Parks Recreation and Intergenerational Commission, and before that, obviously, the Parks and Rec Commission. I served on there for about two, two, three years, three years. Currently serve on the First Five Yolo Commission. Was appointed by Supervisor Oscar Villegas on that commission, so this is my second year on that, third year, going on, third year on that commission. I have two children, nine and six years old. One of them is actually taking karate right now at ATA, which I'm going to pick up as soon as this meeting is over, and my six-year-old is a basketball player. So, she plays basketball here in the city and has been involved in rec, recreation activities. But looking forward to serving on the Commission, really representing the interest of, and bringing a perspective of the families that live in West Sacramento. This is what I love about the city. It pretty much includes all the segments when considering development projects. I mean, from children, youth, and their families, to seniors, even, you know, geographic locations from Brighton-Broderick to Southport and Brideway, and so I'm looking forward to kind of sharing that perspective from a community standpoint and working with all of you. So, thank you.
So, I'm the outlier here, and by that I mean, I don't have a lot of government experience. I was the alternate last year, the first alternate, and my background actually is in sports marketing. I worked for the Kings for 10 years and had my own agency for six, and then moved on to development in 2006 and opened, we don't like to say chain, but a chain of local restaurants called Hot Italian. And then currently working on two more development projects. One is a Jewish deli downtown Sacramento, named Solomon's after Russ Solomon, founder of Tower Records, if you're familiar with that name. And then working on a food incubator in, also in downtown Sacramento on 15th and C. It's about two and a half acre project, so. I went back to school to get my Masters in Sustainable Design, so I really tried to incorporate sustainable elements within all of our projects. Hot Italian was the first lead restaurant in the region, and hopefully the other projects will have several elements. Probably not lead, but several green elements as well. So, happy to be back and, and on a full-time basis now, so. Thanks for having me.
Great, thanks so much, and I'll, I'll just end with, it's, I, in the, in the times that I've been able to serve on various Commissions, I've been really impressed with the incredible diversity of experience and expertise that, that my colleagues bring. And I will say, with, I know almost, almost everyone around the, on the dais today, and, and all of you have not been able to express all of the amazing things that you have done and all the expertise that you'll bring, you will bring to this Planning Commission. So, thank you in advance for, for your public service. And with that, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I would like to move that we close this first meeting of 2017 by welcoming the new Commissioners and recognizing our outgoing Commissioners. I'd like to especially recognize Charlie Moore, who has served on the, who had served on the Planning Commission since the inception of the Planning Commission approximately 28 years ago.
Thank you for that. I will adjourn.